Good evening. We'll call tonight's August 13th Planning Commission meeting to order. Ms. Jones, would you please call the roll?
Here.
Mr. Pape. Mr. Calley.
Here.
Mr. McDonald.
Here.
Ms. Schulist.
Here.
Mr. Magnner.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Present.
Ms. Williams.
Present.
Ms. Schilling.
Thank you. If you will, please join me for tonight's opening prayer and the pledge of allegiance. My heavenly Father, I thank you for this day and all that you have provided. I ask that you be with our new students returning to class and the leaders and administrators that are guiding them through their education. I ask you tonight especially for your guidance and your wisdom, and I appreciate all that you provided for me. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, a call for a motion for approval of tonight's agenda.
I move we accept the agenda as printed.
Williams?
Second.
McDonald? Next on the item, we do have a section now for citizens' comments. If I can, just first start by saying, we do limit tonight's comments to five citizens.
Mr. Magnner, I'm sorry. Who seconded the approval of the agenda?
McDonald.
McDonald?
Thank you.
Do you want to call the roll call?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Magnner?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you for that. Apparently, there's a lot of interest and excitement tonight, but as a recap to what we do for citizens' comment sections, we allow the first five citizens three minutes apiece. And since we have quite a bit to talk about tonight, we're going to hold to that very carefully. We do appreciate all of your comments that you're bringing. We want to listen to that, and we definitely appreciate what the community has to offer. So I'll just say, you know, I'll politely raise my hand right at the three-minute mark. We just ask that you recognize that. I'll also point out that there will be an additional public forum that will be held next month for the Board of Commissioners. So if you do not have the opportunity to speak tonight, and you still want to have your voice heard, that would be a very appropriate platform for you to continue to share your opinions as a community. That said, for the public hearing, thank you. Ms. Jones, can you please call off the first name of the list?
Jessica Ford.
Ms. Ford. And Ms. Ford, if you will, please state your name for the record, your address, and whether you are a citizen of the city or the county, please.
Jessica Ford, 7208 Dogwood Drive, the city.
Thank you.
Okay. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to let me speak today on the Bark East development. I wish there had been more of an effort to consult the residents in the surrounding area, as we would greatly be affected by this development. If it hadn't been for the efforts of Ms. Walker, I'm not sure that any of the residents on Dogwood and Glen Haven would be aware of this development. All of the surrounding properties on Glen Haven and Dogwood and Cumberland are low-density lots and estate lots. I moved into the area in 2021. I chose my home and my community carefully. These are my concerns. Something everybody can relate to, trafficking. I referenced the Fairview 2040 Plan. The Figure 2.G depicts our daily traffic volumes. Are the highest between Chester and Cumberland. Adding to the traffic in this area with high-density lots is going to congest that area further, causing more traffic issues. Figure 2.I of the 2040 Plan shows the crash map is highest at the entrance of Glen Haven Drive. It's already become a cut-through for many people trying to get down to Cumberland without having to sit on traffic on Highway 100 and vice versa. They speed. They don't stop at our stop signs. It's become more dangerous for our children that are walking and riding their bikes, noticeably more so during school pickup and drop-off times. Litter is an issue. I constantly have to pick up fast food bags and water bottles out of my yard. Will there be more than one entrance and exit to this development? Rumor has it that a small strip of land that will connect to Glen Haven has been purchased. What will this be used for? Number two, flooding. We're all aware that the topography of Fairview is very hilly with ridges and valleys. My property is a very significant downward slope towards Dogwood Drive. So the development behind me has the higher ground. I currently have flooding issues from my yard, in my front yard, from all the runoff. So does my neighbor to the right, who sits slightly higher than I do. The rain flows from yard to yard till it's left. My neighbor to the left, she's got like a pond in her front yard. The natural resources map in Figure 2.A of the 2040 Plan shows that the property develops along a marked flood plain. Going back to the area mentioned that connects the development to Glen Haven, during heavy rainfall, this area fills with water. Is disrupting this area going to cause more flooding issues to the property owners that live on the downward sloping side of the development? Number three, privacy. As mentioned before, my property slopes downward to Dogwood Drive. Anyone on the high ground has a bird's-eye view into my backyard. I understand that there's a buffer area to be around the development. I would like to know more about what this entails. Will the buffer zone preserve the current trees in the area, or will it be taken down and replaced with a row of evergreen cypress trees? I do not have a fence, nor do several of the other houses located on Dogwood Drive. People, especially children, like to roam the areas that they live in, and I would not feel comfortable with children coming through the hedges and onto my property. Number four, property values. Everyone can agree that we only want our property values to rise. In Livingston County...
Ms. Ford, I apologize. I do need to cut it off. It's short, but I appreciate your comments very much. Thank you. All right. Next, Ms. Jones, do you have on the list?
Ashley Wall.
Ashley Wall. Could you spell that, please?
Ashley Wall, W-A-L-L.
W-A-L-L. Thank you. Ms. Wall, would you please state, for the record, your name, your address, and if it's a city or county residence?
7134 Glen Haven Drive, and county.
County.
Is it? City, city.
City. All right. Thank you.
So I'm going to finish what she was saying. She is my next-door neighbor, and I'm the left lot that floods with the pond that she referenced. My son and I moved here seven years ago, and we absolutely fell in love with Fairview. It's safe. We love the community and the schools, and we don't want that to be in jeopardy. Property values. Everyone can agree that we want our property values to rise. We live in Williamson County, the wealthiest county in the state of Tennessee. Development that allow for leasing rental property only lowers property values and attract more low-income residents. Like attracts like, and when I decided to buy a home, I wanted to be in a rural area where I could still find a good sense of community. I could have chosen to live in White Bluff, Ashland City, or other places, but I wanted that Williamson County address. I wanted that Williamson County license plate. I wanted the status of living in the wealthiest county in Tennessee. Rental properties only attract lower income and bad credit. Renters do not take as much care and pride in their homes like homeowners do. They can pack up and leave as soon as their lease is up. But the owners who have chosen to put down the roots in the area, we are in deep. We can't just pack up and leave. I am all about growth and development, as long as it's done correctly. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Wall. Ms. Jones, who do you have for number three, please?
Craig Cropper.
Craig, is it Proper?
Cropper.
Cropper. Thank you. Mr. Cropper, please restate your name, address, and city or county, please.
Craig Cropper, 2480 Fairview Boulevard, Fairview, Tennessee.
That's a city, obviously, at that point.
I'm sorry.
That's city or county at that point?
City.
City. Thank you, sir.
Yes. You know, we've been up here several times, and there's lots of issues. I see all kinds of issues. You know, there's drainies, there's streets, the width of the streets. Developers was up here the other day, and they were calling the area, the street in front of the townhomes, an alley. Well, when I was 10 years old, I knew the difference between an alley and a street, you know. So that made absolutely no sense to me. But, you know, for me, there's two main issues. Traffic, just like everybody else has said, and the density of the rental apartments. And you can call them townhomes, or whatever you want to call them, but they're going to be apartments, just not, you know, they're not going to be three stories or four stories. Some of them's going to have a garage. They're going to be a little nicer. But for me, that's the two main issues. Now, as far as the traffic, and maybe they've done a, I hadn't seen a traffic study, but there's probably going to be about 452 cars in this development. Now, that's not counting the commercial development when it's done. I come out of my driveway, live across the street. We come out of the driveway about, we have two cars. We come out about five times a day. You know, either going to the store, going to work, or whatever we're doing. We come about five times a day. So even if those 452 cars come out twice a day, that's still almost 1,000 cars extra on top of what's already there. There's 1,775 students go to the three schools. So there's probably 650 cars coming to the schools twice a day. So that's over 1,200 vehicles just at the school. And then we're going to add maybe another 1,000 to that, and that's not counting people going up and down Highway 100 for whatever other business they have to working back. But I would ask the commissioners to look at all the factors involved in this. Traffic, density, the streets. And we are basically in negotiations for our children and our grandchildren. The decisions that you guys make here today, it affects, it's going to affect the city for 50 years or 75 years, long way down the road, long after me and probably everybody here's gone. So I would just ask that they look at everything, all the factors involved in it, and make a decision that they feel in their hearts is best. Thank you very much.
I appreciate your comments. Ms. Jones, who do you have for number four?
Chad Warren.
Chad Warren. Mr. Warren, would you please restate your name, your address, and if it's city or county?
Yes, sir. My name is Chad Warren. I'm at 7114 Glen Haven Drive, and I'm in the city.
Thank you.
It's going to be hard to follow up after Mr. Cropper's talk here. He kind of beat me to the punch with it. I should have signed up before he did. So my concerns are basically the same concerns that me and Mr. Cropper have discussed as well. I'm the first house on the right on Glen Haven, right past Jefferson's. Again, with me and Mr. Cropper, we've been involved with this development pretty much since the land was sold. I've spoken to, I think, every commissioner except for Mr. Hall. Mr. Hall, sorry, I didn't get to call you today, but I was able to speak with pretty much all the commissioners on this and the development of this. And like Mr. Cropper, I'm concerned about the density. I'm not here, I don't know if you guys see it on Facebook or not, but I got on Facebook and put a post to try to get people to come out and speak their opinion out here. You know, I think we had over 150-something comments. This is what we got here. So Mayor Lisa, I called and talked with her today. She told me she basically had four people call her today. That's concerning for me as a citizen growing up here. I feel like we need more involvement from the community and to voice their opinion. And I was talking with Commissioner Johnson today about, there's a lot of traffic comes down Glen Haven just to go to school. We're probably catching 40% of the traffic coming down Glen Haven, going to the middle school and to the high schools. I don't know if anybody's aware of that, or anybody has mentioned that, but that's a concern. I'm not for stopping the development of this company. I just want, of this land, I'm not to stop the development. What I do like you guys to consider is the density of the development over there. I think this is a great concept. I said this when Mr. Ben was up here and presented this with the apartments. I think Fairview needs this. I just don't think that this particular location with this particular pod overlay is right for our city. And I feel like the traffic as well is going to be, is going to be very impacted. Mr. Craig did all his stats on traffic. I didn't go that far. I just know it's going to be overwhelming. We've got a lot of other subdivisions going in on top of that. That's going to flood on top of this development as well. We have City Center Way coming in. That's going to be a dense, high-density population development. And so I just ask for your consideration as well on what our city needs for this development.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Warren. Last citizen, number five, would be Ms. Jones.
Carolyn Roberts.
Is it Carolyn Roberts? Okay. Ms. Roberts, if you will, also please state your name, your address, and if it's city or county.
My name is Carolyn Roberts. I live at 7123 Donald Wilson Drive, and it is...
All right, thank you.
Am I not close enough? How's that? Is that better? Oh, now I can hear myself. Sorry about that. Do I need to repeat my name and address?
I think we have that for the record. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you all so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I wanted to reference some questions I have that have, that were kind of brought up from the meeting on July 9th, and some things that have happened since then. In the meeting on July 9th, Mr. Pape offered to speak independently with a developer, who in turn said that he was not permitted to speak independently with a member of this planning commission. And yet, in the Board of Commissioners meeting on August 1st, a letter was read into the record from Mr. Pape after he spoke independently with the developer. And what I would like to know is what changed, so that a private conversation was permissible after it wasn't permissible on July 9th. Also in that meeting, the developer's legal representative indicated and went back and forth about what fits into the 2040 Plan. And so my question for the Planning Commission, and then in turn for the Board of Commissioners, is how do we determine what part of the plan is followed? Are we looking at the zoning in the plan, or are we looking at the intent of the citizens who spent their time developing that plan? If I recall from what I read, the citizens took their time to say that their sentiment was to retain Fairview's rural character. They want low-density housing, and they want a city center to be the heart of their city. There were so many people that showed up for the three different instances of town halls for that 2040 comprehensive plan. So Mr. Warren asked this evening, where are they? They're comfortable mentioning something on Facebook, but they're not here. Where are they? Why were they invested in 2019, and they are not invested in 2024? I also have a question. I'd like to know how many approved units have been passed, and not permitted units, but how many approved units are currently passed and slated to be built in Fairview? And finally, and this may or may not be a thing, but I have been watching town halls, and I have been speaking with other citizens in Fairview. And I'm wondering, what is the developer's responsibilities when we're contracting with them for these developments? To ensure that citizens are not negatively affected by flooding of their homes during excavation? And is there a responsibility for them to help offset the costs of repairing these homes? There have been some devastating stories that we have heard.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. I'm sorry. I got to cut you off.
No, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
We do, we appreciate everybody's comments. Just as a reminder, feel free to attend and look for the public hearing. That will be announced and displayed on the city website, so that you'll know when and where and how to participate. So if you still have additional comments, we would encourage you to participate in that manner. On to the next item of the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the July 9th regular meeting. Ms. Jones, will you please call? Make a motion to approve. All right. Thank you, Mr. Calley.
Second.
Calley McDonald. Sorry, Ms. Jones, please call the roll.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Mr. Magnner?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Thank you. Onto old business. I'll first read, we have one item on the old business. It's PC Resolution PC 29-24, reconsider rezoning. Master Development Plan, Bark East, Fairview, 37.52 acres, map 46, parcels 87. Current zoning is CG. Proposed zoning, RM8 pod and RS10 pod. Property owner, Bark East LLC. Before we read the staff report, we'll first start with, do we have a motion on the floor for this one?
Vote for approval?
Second.
Anderson Schulist? Before I have the staff read the report, I do want to just mention the following, okay? First and foremost, just as a quick recap here, this planning commission offers either a favorable or a non-favorable recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners then take that responsibility of either approving or denying the submission. So we try to factor in all of our interpretations of the zoning, the planning codes, and, you know, based on all of the research that we have done. So I just want to first highlight to the community, the process here, and the appropriate process is followed. Now, last, on July 9th, when we met last, we reviewed the project. It first came up for a deferment. The deferment did not pass, so this planning commission decided to go ahead and vote whether we were going to recommend or not recommend this project. So the deferment did not pass, so it was decided on July 9th to vote for either a favorable or unfavorable recommendation. This board voted five to four in unfavorable conditions that was sent to the Board of Commission, okay? So as a reminder, we are providing a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. I just want to throw that out, make that perfectly clear for tonight, all right? So if this continues to the Board of Commissioners, we will look for them to do what they need to do to either pass or not pass this submission, all right, as a reminder. Mr. Ethan, will you read the staff report, please? And last comment, I did not see any revisions in my packet from what we saw on July 9th. All we have to go from is any verbal commentary that's provided. I did not see any revisions to the submission from what we already voted on. So I just also want to make that perfectly clear. Mr. Greer?
Our staff report that's provided for you in your packet is the same staff report that was provided on July 9th. The applicant provided the document that was handed out to you prior to this meeting of effective lot sizes, including the buffer area, like this, that I handed out to each of you, provided by the applicant. That was provided to the Board of Commissioners at their first meeting this month. And after reviewing that meeting and some of the information that was discussed between the developer and the board, the board felt that it was necessary for this project to come back to the Planning Commission to have a secondary review after this information was presented to the board. They wanted to know if the Planning Commission, if that would change the opinion of the Planning Commission. So our staff report has remained the same as it was on July 9th, 2024. The applicant is here tonight to discuss this document that was provided to you. And you're welcome to have them come up and ask any questions that you would like further information on. The recommendation that's given tonight will go to the Board of Commission for their September 5th board meeting. And on the night of September 5th, the public hearing will also be held for this project. And that is where the public can have uninterrupted, as long as they would like to speak and have their mind be heard, they can speak as long as they would like at that meeting.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Greer. So policy procedure dictates that we need to open this back up for discussion. However, there's no new submitted information. We've already voted on this once before last month, all right? So as a reminder, would you please state your name, address for the record?
Jason Holloman. I'm 4210 Park Avenue. I'm the attorney for the developer, Katera, which is a Lennar company, on behalf of the Bark East development.
All right. Thank you, sir. Do you have any new information tonight that you would wish to share?
I would like to share a couple of points, because this developer has tried to respond to the comments and recommendations that they heard here on July 9th, in addition, things that were discussed at the Board of Commissioners meeting. From the public comments, you know, I heard two main concerns, which were about traffic and about density. I would like to address one piece of new information, which is our traffic study has now been complete. It was not complete, I believe, at the time that we were here in July. That traffic study calls for the construction of a left-turn lane into this development, and that is something that this developer is committed to.
Sir, a question on that. Has that traffic study been submitted to the city or available to the Planning Commission?
It has been.
All right. Mr. Greer, is that something that?
That traffic study was available. That's within the document, and it is the same warrant that the state would require them to have a left-turn lane.
All right. Thank you very much.
Just wanted to acknowledge that that traffic issue will be improved as part of this development. Additionally, and this is not so much new information, but clarification maybe from the discussion that was had before, which is when this development was before you, prior with a different developer, this body may be aware that the current developer reduced the density, we heard a lot about density, by 41%. So what was submitted to you in this initial application was a 41% reduction from what you had previously heard. And in response to the city's comments and working with staff, it's an additional 7% from that original number for a total of almost half the number of units that we were originally, or that the prior developer was originally talking about. So, you know, I just think it's important, as we move forward, to recognize that the developer that is before you has tried very hard to respond to your comments. You know, we have been here. We started with a much lower number. We've tried to respond. One of the comments that we heard last time was concerned about the length of the driveway. We have increased that by five feet to try to accommodate longer vehicles that may be parking that driveway to prevent them from crossing over into the sidewalk so that we have better pedestrian access for the upcoming residents of this development. That's another way in which this plan has been changed. And finally, I just want to make you aware that initially, the actual lot size under this pod was about 5,000 square feet. The actual lot size has now increased to 7,000 square feet on average. And because of the commitments we've made to buffering with the adjacent neighborhood, you're talking about an effective, and that's the handout that you see has been added. The effective lot size is now at almost 10,000 square feet. So do want to make you aware that that's where we are in terms of what the look and feel of this development is going to be. Finally, I just want to say that in terms of talking about the Vision 2040 Plan, this developer sat down with that plan in hand to try to give you exactly what was called for in that plan. And we are here on a pod with an RM8 and RS10 development, because that's what your plan calls for. So the shift to that pod was directly in response to what your community plan, set up by your residents and your staff, asked for. And that's what we've tried to deliver, and we've tried to be responsive in tailoring it, in what is now two Planning Commission meetings. You know, typically, there's only one. And in response to what we heard before the Board of Commission passed to move forward just last week. So that's where we are, and we're certainly happy to answer additional questions.
All right. I'll open up now to the Planning Commission for comments.
I have a question.
Williams.
Thank you, guys, for being here today. Could you, just out of respect for our citizens that are here today, just... Um, could you, just out of respect for our citizens that are here today, just reexamine or rediscuss the usage of wastewater management? And how that may have an effect on this low-density property that they refer to? And then the second part?
I just want to be clear, do you mean wastewater or stormwater?
Stormwater, excuse me.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I work for the Department of Health, so I, so I study.
I think wastewater is not a big problem, I want to be clear.
Stormwater management, and as it relates to low density, how you plan on controlling that. And then secondly, if you can just elaborate more on some of the economic advantages of this growth it will have in the community, if any?
Let, let me just give you the, at fifty thousand feet, um, we will be required, and we will, uh, have improved stormwater conditions from what you see there now on this property as part of this development. But I'm happy to let Josh, if you want to describe any of the details of that.
Josh Roland with Kim Lee Horn, uh, representing the applicant. In answer to your question about stormwater, uh, the conditions today on the property are that stormwater that falls on the site exits the site freely. There's, there's no controls today for the stormwater. But when you develop a property in the, in the way that we're proposing, the state, uh, regulates, uh, very stringent requirements for stormwater ponds that detain the water. Um, so, we will not be increasing, um, any stormwater rates off of the property. We'll actually be.
Kevin O'Brien from Cotera, to address the second part of your question, the economic benefit. Uh, we intend this to be a very clean, uh, what we believe to be the best amenitized development in Fairview that's going to provide working, professional families, uh, retail rate accommodations with green space, park-like setting, um, and just a great place that even I'd want to live. On top of that, we're leaving the front protected as a commercial corridor. We know that's important to the city, we know that's in the, the 2040 Plan. Um, and, and we've heard that retail and commercial aren't going to come there without the rooftops behind. In fact, um, it, it sounds like there's been a sit-down restaurant, um, that I can't talk about, that, that would be in tandem with our development to come to the front, that would help and kind of activate this, this live, walk, eat kind of play setting. Um, and, and last economic benefit, of course, I don't want to skip over would be, there's, there's tax revenue. This would be a tax revenue base for the city.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair? If I may?
Okay.
Um, just got a couple clarifying questions. Honestly, may, uh, mainly directed at the staff, Mr. Owens in particular. Um, taking a look at the traffic study that was provided to us in this listed documents, uh, in the Planning Commission packet. In particular, page twenty-eight, uh, there's a chart detailing out, um, no build versus build densities. I was hoping that you might be able to shed a little clarification on that. Um, not a traffic engineer, so I was hoping to kind of just get an explanation on that. I, I do see that, um, it appears that the build versus no build, particular on the Cumberland Drive, um, Crow Cut Road, Fairview Boulevard intersection, is increasing that density by close to a hundred percent.
King, that is correct. Um, there are some, uh, locations that have been evaluated in this traffic study that do result in a degradation in the law, uh, level of service, not necessarily from a letter grade, but certainly from a delay time. Uh, the one you mentioned, uh, for instance, uh, the no build AM peak for the westbound Fairview Boulevard and Crow Cut Road Cumberland Drive intersection, uh, the no build AM peak delay is a hundred and thirty-nine seconds, where the build AM, so this is the scenario where if it, if this development is built out, uh, the delay time would be two hundred and ninety-four seconds, more than doubling that delay.
And so that, that stemmed the recommendation of the turn lane. Um, however, you know, I did not see on here a study showing kind of what that turn lane, how that would help and, and kind of what the, what the wait time would look like with that turn lane in. Is that, is that anywhere in the report?
Uh, I am uncertain the applicant's engineer may be able to answer that.
I can clarify that the two turn lanes that are, uh, posed in the traffic study related to this development are at our two driveways. We have a southbound left turn, and each right turn is proposed, and a northbound right turn lane. And that's, those are the impacts that are triggered by these, these units in the commercial development.
Okay, thank you. Uh, while I've got you up here, I just want to clarify, this does not take into account the added phasing and these added developments on Crow Cut Road or Cumberland, in the Cumberland Estates, the Aiden Woods, as well as the other?
We, we factor in background traffic growth as well. We spoke with the city staff and we looked at other approved developments around. So, this is a, a comprehensive traffic study, not just for this development, but for background traffic as well.
Okay. Um.
Anticipated traffic future in the future.
Okay. Um, I mean, for me with this, a lot of these intersections already at an F rating. Uh, this is a, a lot of density to add to this area. It's just, it, it's hard for me to swallow, um, approving something that, that's got, or sending a recommendation for approval to, uh, something that's already a troubled area and a very congested section of Highway one hundred that everybody has issues with, um, that drives that area. Uh, I've got one other question for Mr. Owens. The private drives A, B, C, and D on the plans, I know there's been a lot of questions around the right-of-way, the required, um, asphalt width, as well as just kind of what that's classified as. I was hoping to maybe get some clarification on that, if, if we have, um, if you can shed some light on that.
Sure. As I understand it, the, um, intention is to maintain the multifamily area as a singular parcel of single ownership. As such, the internal drives that are shown would be internal access drives to a single parcel. As such, those aren't necessarily private roads with associated easement or right-of-way. They're just internal driveways accessing those units. Um, there is a requirement in the zoning ordinance that requires internal drives to be built to the geometric standard of city streets. So, the, the expectation would be, there is no application of right-of-way width, but the paved width and the sidewalk requirements would be applicable at the next review stage when a site plan comes in for that multifamily area.
So, it would have to, just to clarify, it would have to comply with the city street standard if it was planned to be platted out into separate properties? Is that correct?
Yes, if the individual units are desired to be owned individually, independent of each other, then those would become private roads, uh, and that standard would apply.
And it, and it does not meet the standard currently?
It does not.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. McDonald?
The perfect segue for the question that I had, um, also for staff. So, based on what you just said, the townhome section of this is all viewed as one lot, so they're able to do the roads the way they are because they don't have to follow the subregs. Is that accurate for better or worse?
Yes.
So, in the future, well, hang on. So, as it's currently sits, there's absolutely no way that these wouldn't be rentals, correct? Because you couldn't individually sell them, you'd have to subdivide them, which would then mean the subregs would come into play, which would mean that they're not, they're not in compliance with those.
Correct. The review stand, the review sta, staff's review standard would be changed to review it against the subreg requirements. That's correct.
So, it would be a heavy lift to build this as it currently is? In the future, somehow subdivide it out, change the roads to make it compliant with the city? So, ba, so, for all extents and per, intent and purposes, it's never going to be subdivided. Is that fairly accurate to say?
I, I mean, it, it could be done. There would, in your terms, there would have, there would be a heavy lift, not only from the roads perspective, but the utility services perspective also.
So, for more or less, it's pretty reasonable to assume that these are rentals for?
If it remains in, as a singular parcel under one ownership, unless it's somebody with a really big family. Um, yes, they, I would assume that they would.
I just, I, I, I just wanted that to be clear, because that was something that I hadn't really pieced together prior to this meeting. And then getting extra time to look into it, kind of started thinking about that. And it just seems like we've been, I don't want to say told, but maybe hinted at, that there's a possibility these won't be rentals, maybe we'll sell them, maybe we won't, we're not sure. But the way this is designed and our subregs, it, it almost guarantees that they would be rentals, correct?
Uh, it, it, the, the expectation of staff would be, if this goes forward and is approved as shown, that the next step for approval and review would be a site plan showing all of those units, and it would be approved as a site plan, not as a preliminary plat and then a final plat for the multifamily area. So, yes, it, it would follow the path, the approval path of non-individual ownership.
Thank you.
I can, I'll make a couple comments. You know, you referred to the workshop that we had. Also, a continuation of that that was spoken of in July. Just speaking of the, the density, one of the, one of the opinions of this, of, of a few folks, I guess I'm not speaking for everybody, but the density of the surrounding area, as it would have but to the adjacent neighbors, we had requested our, uh, opinion that that should be of a less dense than what we have now. Um, so, just to clarify, I, I think, you know, we were, we were concerned about that perimeter road. Also, my personal opinion, this entire property right now is commercial with the opportunity to have some transitional qualities. But we've, we've reduced the percentage of commercial opportunities down to what looks like less than a quarter of what we would potentially have, which means we are very limited in the number of restaurants, businesses, commercial opportunities that we could have for this community because we're making room for more townhomes. In the heart of our city, you know, this is very short distance from the town center. So, I'm, I'm personally concerned about the limitation that this particular pod has on our commercial opportunities for, for the community. So, again, that, that's my personal opinion.
Mr. Chair?
Mayor Anderson.
Mine's going to be a little lengthy. Okay. First of all, I'd like to clarify, and Mr. Carter, correct me if I'm wrong, any commissioner is allowed to speak one-on-one with developers. There's nothing against that. Is that correct?
Yes, that has nothing to do with the Open Meetings Act.
That's right. The Open Meetings Act states that I can't speak to Mr. Magner outside of an open forum, public forum, where everyone knows what I'm talking to Mr. Magner about. But I can speak with the developers to answer questions, to, uh, resolve concerns, anything like that. And then hopefully, I bring them back to you, the public and to the board, where we're in an open forum and everybody can hear what I have to say and what I learned. But as far as each individual, we absolutely can speak to, to the developers and get information and ask for, you know, if, if we have an opinion of something that might, you know, help this project, we can do that. So, I just, I wanted to clear that up. Also, um, I think it was mentioned that the state is in control of our storm, stormwater ordinance. That is not true. We adopted a stormwater ordinance, um, in the city of Fairview that's very stringent. So, I have spoken, now, um, someone mentioned that I spoke to four people. It was actually twelve. I had eight, eight more people contact me in a group an hour before the meeting, which we spoke as a group, so I did want to put that out there. And my phone number's everywhere. If anybody wants to talk to me, I'm perfectly open to it. Um, I spoke with, um, a citizen who was concerned about stormwater issues and flooding. And then I asked her, you know, when did you contact the, um, the codes department about this issue? She said back in two thousand sixteen. Well, starting in two thousand, was it twenty-two? Twenty-two, um, the board's changed, the city staff has changed, and we have a wonderful group that is willing to help and listen. Anytime you call, they're, they're willing to take, you know, take matters and try to help. So, I do want people to know that if you, in the past, have had issues and not gotten help, Ethan Greer is amazing, and just reach out to him, because he will get our codes people on top of it and help, okay? Okay, as far as commercial, I know that that was brought up. There is a, if you notice on the plan, and I'm sorry, I was, there, I had a, a pointer and I didn't bring it tonight, which I should have. If you notice in the middle of the plan, there's a large, I'm, I'm going to call it a water feature. That's probably not what it's considered. But if you notice through the middle of the plan, behind the commercial, there is, um, a water, I'm just going to call it a water feature, that goes all the way through the plan. Then it goes all the way down in between the single-family homes with the townhome and the other townhomes. Okay, when you have a water feature like that, you cannot, you're restricted as to how much commercial you can have. So, that right there determines that, you know, the commercial cannot go past a certain point. So, they've done the best job they can of putting commercial up front. The potential commercial, if you see the top square that's above this development, is what they're talking about with the rooftops, getting this nice restaurant, that I hear from everybody that they want all the time. So, also, I have to say that this development started, the first time it came to us, it came to us as four hundred and fifty-six rented apartments, not retail rate. So, we turned that down because I heard from so many people in our community, we do not want this whole development to be apartments. So, we turned it down. Then it came back to us as just a straight zone. We did not want it a straight zone because we wanted to be able to have control over this property. We wanted to be able to have it as a PUD where we can say how things are done and how exteriors are done and just have, have some input into how the project is going to be built. So, they came back to us with a PUD. We had two, um, public meetings, and I hear that, you know, people aren't finding out about these. And that's disappointing to me because I have three thousand followers from Fairview on my site, and I know some people don't do social media, and that's fine. But what you need to do is when you find out about things, please let your friends know so that they can be involved and they can learn about projects before they get to the end of it. Because we had two public meetings where people could come and talk about this project and give their input from the community. So, with the Board of Commissioners, with the developers, with the Planning Commission. So, I, I feel like, you know, we gave the public opportunity to talk. We can't go out and knock on doors and say, hey, come to the meeting. But y'all can reach out to each other, and I think that's a good, good way to get the word out. Give me just a minute. This development has a twenty-foot buffer all the way around it with, um, trees that will separate the properties from this development and buffer where you have a nice screen. The single-family homes will be sold. Also, as a retail rental rate on the townhomes, I'm called all the time, do you have any rentals? Do you have any rentals out here? And we, believe it or not, we're low on inventory. And sometimes people just don't want to own a home. They want to be in a townhome. They don't want to keep up the grass. They don't want to keep up the exterior. So in my opinion, we need a variety. I don't, I, I can tell you right now, I couldn't go out and buy a house nowadays out here in Fairview on an acre or maybe even a half acre lot. The prices have just gotten high. So I want my kids to move out of my home. And let me tell you how that works. They've got to be able to afford it. But guess what? My son works here in Fairview. He doesn't want to have to move to Hickman County or Dixon maybe. I mean, not that there's anything wrong with Hickman County or Dixon, but you know, they tend to have some, a little bit lower prices, you know, price point than we do. He wants to live in his own community, but not with his mother for the rest of his life. And I just don't see how, if we don't have a variety out there of even rentals, and we're talking retail rate rentals, and you know, that's something that they can transition from home to a rental to their own single-family home. And I do like the fact that, you know, our 2040 plan, our community weighed in on that 2040 plan. The 2040 plan for that area states that it's transitional corridor. That's exactly what this is. We've got commercial, transitioning into townhomes, transitioning into single-family homes with a nice buffer all the way around, with a stormwater ordinance protecting their neighbors from water runoff. And if you are affected by water runoff, you come to me. And I'll, or go to Ethan and we'll make sure that we take a look at what's going on because I want you protected. But I just feel like, you know, we've got, we're, we're all in this half acre, acre lot thing. And I just know the kids out here and, you know, me. If I had to repurchase my house, there's no way I could, I could buy one of these houses that are seven, 800 and up, $1,000. And think about how much that is a month. So in my opinion, this project is one that I'm in favor of because I think it's good for our community. And I do want our citizens protected and I do want you to come to us if, if something does not happen the way it's supposed to. That's all.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. If I can clarify, because there's, there's been a few reactions here. There are developments in Williamson County that breach over waterways, wastewater. I'm thinking of Franklin Road, South Franklin. As you head out of town, there's a, I think it used to be a, it's a big box store. I mean, if we could put townhomes across the waterway, then we could continue with some commercials. So I realize there's a business aspect here. You've got to get so many residential properties to help support the development. I get that. But from a community, I just think that we're shoehorning ourselves there. My concern on the buffer and there, you could see the image of this on this plan. The three small green items are the evergreens over a stretch of 100 feet. So of, of the months where the deciduous trees will lose their leaves, our screen is, you know, effectively one-third of what it should be. So that, there's not much screening taking place in my opinion. And lastly, in the transitional neighborhood, we keep referring to the 2040 plan. It does state that parking should be to the rear side of buildings. You know, we've, we've squeezed these townhomes in to the point where parking's all up just in the front off of, off of these streetways. So, you know, it feels, it feels dense to me. Those are my reactions. Ms. Shulis.
Shulis or Schilling?
I'm sorry, Ms. Schilling.
My question is, how many townhouses is, is in that right now?
195 and down from an initial 210.
So to put that in perspective, because I'm going to be a grandmother and I want my kids to live by me too. We looked at the ones behind Sonic. That's 50 townhomes and that doesn't really take up that much. I understand the car part of it, but that's four, it's like four streets right there and it's not a lot. But my question too is, I wanted people to see the perspective of that's really not a big road there. What is determining why you need to rent it? Do you think that you couldn't sell 180 townhouses?
I mean, to be frank with you, we work for Lennar. It's a large company made by an investments team and it's made it, this is over two years away from being delivered.
That was my other question too.
And you can see what the housing market has done in the past two years. It's really impossible to forecast the next two years.
Right.
That's what will drive it.
I mean, I do, I do agree with, with everybody on both because I live on Cumberland too. And I see the traffic that's, that's there too. I mean, if anybody should be complaining, we should be complaining to T-Dot for not putting that light in for another two years because that's where all our trouble is and that's where the frustration comes with us coming in and out. We can't turn left between 2:00 and 4:00 o'clock onto Cumberland. But I mean, I don't necessarily want it to be rentals either. I would rather there be young families coming in or young people just getting married. And so how do we, how do we leverage that so that it works for both?
We totally hear your concern. I mean, the challenges we're here for zoning before we can even really get into our due diligence and market research. And we're way far away from delivery.
Well, that's something to consider too.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
We hear you loud and clear.
Mr. Magnner.
Mr. Greer.
The piece that connects from this development down to Glen Haven Drive is reserved for their sewer connection. There is a sewer line that runs along Glen Haven Drive. One of the citizens spoke to that earlier about what would that piece be used for. So that is their gravity sewer that runs down to, it's a underground pipe, much like everyone else in the city has a sewer pipe.
So what is the opportunity that that could ever become an access point to the neighborhood? Will they have the legal right to pursue that?
That has not been presented in their plan at this point. Based on the.
Sorry, let me rephrase my question. Technically, can that parcel of property ever be converted within their legal rights to an access drive?
It would be disadvantageous for a developer to build a access point at that point due to the water feature that the mayor spoke about as it extends through that piece of property.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chair.
And a mayor.
Also, I did want to point out because I'm, I jotted down different questions that, that people asked me when I spoke to them today. And we do have issues on Highway 100. Right now, we're in the process of an alternate route that will go from Crow Cut all the way out to 96. It will be Northwest Highway. It's going to be three lane, two lane and a turning lane all the way through. So that will be an alternate route when that gets built, which is not, is something we're working on right now. Also, the traffic light, you know, I have a lot of questions about the traffic light. It has been approved. They are staking out right now. It's in the process. The process with T-Dot is not fast. But in the next couple of years, we'll have the traffic light. I know that doesn't help right now. But we, we've also got to think about something I think that people don't really, you know, think about all the time. Yes, we have traffic in Fairview, but do you realize where a lot of the traffic on 100 comes from? Dixon, Hickman, Lyles, Bonacqua, Nashville, Bellevue, and they're not slowing down their growth. So every bit of traffic out there is not just Fairview. It's every single community in the area that decides that they're going to grow as well, who use 100 to go to Nashville and back from work. Also, if there's anything on the interstate as far as a wreck, guess what becomes 100? I mean Interstate 40, 100 does. So what we're in the process of doing, we've got a new state representative who was just elected, Lee Reeves. And I suggest, as I will be doing, being in his ear all the time. Because what can increase this, or, or, you know, make it happen faster, this widening of 100 is having our state representative represent us and get that taken care of sooner than later. So that's what I'm going to be doing to help this, you know, this issue. That's all.
Thank you.
Chair. Just clarification, he has not been elected. Oh, my gosh, I am so sorry. I am so sorry. Let me rephrase. I apologize. He, he has not been elected. The election's in November. So when Lironda Williams wins, we need to, we need to be, have her be in the ears of the people on the Hill to get our roads widened. Thank you. I apologize.
Ms. Shulis.
Mr. Chair. When you came before us in July, you had brought 237 homes. 42 single-family, 123 townhomes, front-loaded, and then 72 townhomes with surface parking. What is the count now?
That is the count. That was after working through with staff and reducing to something we thought would succeed.
I would like to just note, in the 2040 comprehensive plan that was adopted by the Board of Commissioners, this property is designated as residential transition neighborhood. The front portion that is remaining commercial in this plan is denoted as commercial corridor in the 2040 comprehensive plan. For the residential transition neighborhood, the appropriate land uses in the 2040 plan are multifamily residential, single-family attached residential, single-family detached residential and civic and institutional. The appropriate zonings that are listed in the 2040 comprehensive plan are RS-15, which allows for 15,000 square foot lots, RS-8, which allows for 8,000 square foot lots, RS-5, which allows for 5,000 square foot lots, and RM-8 with a PUD. The development character that is described in the 2040 plan is a mixture of small footprint residential buildings such as manor houses, three to eight units, townhouses, two-family houses, cottage courts, and cottages that are intended to transition from the commercial corridors to nearby established single-family neighborhoods. There's a emphasis on walkability, shallow setbacks up to 2.5 stories and parking to the rear or side of the building as a development character listed in the 2040 plan.
And we do not have that currently in this plan, correct? Parking to the side or the rear?
We do not currently have parking to the rear or side of the building.
Thank you, Ms. Greer.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes, this is for staff too, just clarification, just for myself and whoever else is trying to figure this all out. The, the process, if you were to subdivide in the future, would require a replotting of everything, correct? What would that process look like if that was the case?
It would involve having a, a, an amended pod come back through the entire process.
From this, from, so we would be back at this very point, right?
So if market conditions in two years were determined by the applicant that they wanted these to be individual-owned units, then they would submit an amendment application to the pod that was approved.
So just for clarification, I just, I felt like something could be taken out of context or misleading. There is no in the future determining whether or not this, after tonight, if this passes or after it passes the BOC, if that happens, you would have to start this process all over again if they decided they wanted to subdivide all those townhomes and sell them as individual, correct?
My opinion, that would be staff's expectations.
Thank you.
Probably a good jumping in point for me to say what I want to say. I want to remind you that your administrative body means that you're appointed, not elected. This is a rezoning and a master development plan and you're called on to make a recommendation to the legislative body that can consider discretionary type items, how they feel about this or how they feel about that, as long as those feelings are based on something that's rational. They, they can use that standard. That's called a discretionary, abusive discretion standard. But the standard that you're held to is whether you're acting arbitrarily or capriciously. And that comes down to, you need to look at the 2040 plan and the other city standards that are applicable here and decide whether this plan meets them or not. If it doesn't meet them, then you're, then you should not recommend it. And if in your estimation it does meet them, then, then you should recommend it. And so you don't have discretion to say, well, this is too much traffic. I'm just against it. That's, that's, that's a feeling or an emotion, not a standard. So you have to tie however you vote to the standards that are in front of you. And, and the reason why it's probably good to mention here is we can't speculate about, right now what's in front of you is rental townhomes is, is what it is on one lot. We, we shouldn't be voting on something that may or may not happen in two years. You can only vote as to whether what's in front of you meets the standards or not.
If I, if I may, just to ask you a question on that. First off, I was just wanting to get clarification that there wasn't anybody misled, that we are going to just talk about this as a later date.
I think it was a good question. And the developer, you know, it's a, it's, you're kind of like darn if you do, if you darn if you don't when you're a developer because you're going to ask all these questions for the temptation is to give you all this information, some of which is probably proper to consider, some of which is probably more proper for the BOC to, to, to consider because they have discretion and you don't. But, you know, I, I understand why so much information is given at this stage.
Is it, and again, this is for clarification too, with a pod, is it? I've always been under the impression that you didn't really need a specific reason when it comes to a rezoning and a pod is wide open for discussion. Like for example, I could make an argument that I want the roads to be blue and that would be within my right to do that, could it not be?
I think you're confusing the standard. You're sitting tonight as a planning commission. As an administrative body, so that's a proper, that's proper at the BOC level as long as it's a rational basis and not, you're not abusing discretion.
Sure.
Here tonight, your duty is to look at the standards that apply to these types of pods and master development plans and looking at the 2040 plan. So like Mr. Magnner's question about the parking, clarifying the parking because that's directly tied to the 2040 plan, that could justify how he votes, you know, for, to approve or to recommend or not recommend.
Well, I guess for the record, I asked the questions just because I wanted to get clarification on the, the, just because I, it felt like some things were being assumed or maybe projected and I just wanted to get clarification on that. For the record, on my particular vote on how I vote tonight has everything to do with our street standards and the future of this development. If and when anything was to change, it would require quite a bit of, of work on the city's part, which would be a burden on us financially and, and the hours that these guys have to put in. So for the record on my vote, that is where I'm coming from.
So for the record, my, my comment was not related to your comment at all. It was kind of a general comment because I estimated that everybody's probably said their piece by now. And we're, we're probably getting close to voting. And so I just wanted you to hear that from your attorney regarding what the standard is before we, before we vote. So.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
And just one other comment on that. It's, it's interesting that the Board of Commissioners has kicked this back. Even though it's based on a recommendation, this is the second revote that we've had, I think, this year on recommendations that we've already submitted. So I think a little bit of that commentary though does help hopefully our Board of Commissioners understand the rationale of us trying to interpret what we see and hear in, in these items. Any last comments, questions? All right. As a reminder, this is a recommendation to go to the Board. All right, as a reminder, this is a recommendation to go to the Board of Commissioners, either favorable or unfavorable. On the table, we have a, a motion of approval. Ms. Jones, would you please call the vote?
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Shulis?
Aye.
Mr. King?
No.
Mr. McDonald?
No.
Mr. Calley?
No.
Ms. Schilling? Ms. Williams?
Based on the standard, yes.
Mr. Magners?
Nay. We have reached, we have reached a impasse of tied vote.
A neutral recommendation.
So... For the record, we will not have a favorable or non-favorable recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. I invite the community to attend and help participate in that next action. Appreciate your time tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Your input.
Thank you for your time.
And appreciate everybody else's participation. Next on the item, we have new business. Item number one, PC Resolution PC 31-24, Site Development Plan, Laystar Inc. It's a 14.76 acres, MAP 23, Parcel 53. Current zoning IR, property owner is Laystar Inc. Beg a motion to approve PC 31-24.
Calley?
Second.
Shulis? Mr. Greer, would you please read your report?
Louis Sloyan with T-Squared Engineering has submitted on behalf of Laystar Inc. A site plan to construct a 10,000-square-foot headquarters for Laystar Inc. On property located on Fairview Boulevard, east of Brush Creek Road and north of Lakeview Drive. The site plan also illustrates all required parking, stormwater infrastructure, landscaping, and all necessary water and wastewater infrastructure. The parcel is zoned IR industrial restrictive, and the requested land use is manufacturing limited, which is a permitted use within the IR zone district. The properties to the north are zoned RS-15, single-family residential, and RS-40, single-family residential. The property to the east is zoned RS-40, single-family residential. The properties to the south and west are zoned commercial general. The parcel to the south is currently vacant. The parcels located on the south side of Fairview Boulevard are primarily vacant with one residence present at 1391 Fairview Boulevard. The parcels to the east and southeast contain a single-family residence. The parcel to the north is currently vacant. The parcels to the west contain a commercial business with a large portion of that parcel remaining vacant. Site overview, the parcel contains 14.76 acres. However, the limits of disturbance cover only 2.5 acres of the entire parcel. This location of the proposed building and parking is at the southern portion of the parcel due to the steep topography on the eastern and northern portions of the parcel. Additionally, there is a stream located along the eastern property boundary and two wet weather conveyances located in the northern portions of the parcel. Due to the topographic challenges and presence of the stream and wet weather conveyances, the development of this property is constrained to the area proposed for the development. The owner is requesting two exceptions from provisions within the design review manual. The owner has clearly stated and requested both exceptions in a separate letter that was submitted with the site development plan. The first exception request is to permit an above-ground detention pond. The request is based on the proposed detention pond being located northeast of the proposed building, a distance of 250 feet from Fairview Boulevard, and the pond will be heavily landscaped in addition to the retention of large areas of existing trees to the north and east. The second exception is a request to supplement the proposed tree replacement with a contribution to the tree fund in an amount of $29,650 for mitigation of 593 caliper inches. Staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the Laystar Inc. Site Development Plan in order to construct a 10,000-square-foot headquarters for Laystar on property located in, on Fairview Boulevard, east of Brush Creek and north of Lakeview Drive, along with required parking, stormwater infrastructure, landscaping, and all necessary water and wastewater infrastructure. And the two requested exceptions as resubmitted on July 29, 2024, with the following conditions of approval included in Resolution PC 31-24. All staff comments to be addressed prior to a pre-construction meeting, exception to allow above-ground stormwater detention, and exception to allow payment in lieu of tree replacement.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Do we have a representative of this application? Sir, if you'll please state your name and address.
My name is Louis Sloyan, and I'm with T-Square Engineering. The address is 111 Southeast Parkway Court in Franklin.
Thank you, sir. We'll open up to comments and questions unless, if you have any, you know, opening statements. I think the development package was fairly detailed. Unless there's anything specific that you wish to add.
Nothing additional that Mr. Greer hasn't already addressed. But if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Open it up for Planning Commission comments or questions?
Mr. Chair.
Madam Mayor.
This is an exciting day for Fairview that Laystar has come into our community. They not only bring a wonderful business to our community, but they are supporting our mechatronics program from Fairview High School. Our mechatronics students are able to get their associate's degree while they're in high school, and as a part of that, they have to get 200 hours of training, onsite training, to be able to get that degree. In the, in, you know, previously, they've had to go to places like GM in Spring Hill, go out to, you know, Nissan in Smyrna. Now we have something in our community, a business in our community, that is welcoming our students to come and get their hours that they have to, that they're required to have to graduate with their associate's degree while they're in high school. So I'm just so excited to have Laystar in our community. And as far as the detention pond, it will not be viewed from the street, and our tree bank continues to grow. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just concur with that. I think, you know, given the site topography and difficulties here, I think it was pretty well laid out. If there are no other comments or questions, Ms. Jones, would you please call, Mr. Greer?
Mr. Magners. Bree, if you could go down to the exterior elevations. Industrial does have a different requirement than commercial, and this does fit within our design review manual. But just so everyone knows what the building will look like, I did throw it in the presentation so that everyone could see.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Ms. Jones, please call the vote.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Ms. Shulis?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling? Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Magners?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries eight to zero. Thank you, sir, appreciate your time seeing.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Moving on to the agenda, bonds and letters of credit. Do we have any tonight to report on? I don't see any listed on the agenda. Next item would be reports for discussion and information by the four departments, starting first with planning staff.
Thank you all, Planning Commission members, for your continued dedication to our city and working through all the challenges, I think, in the last couple of months. I've probably received the most phone calls over the last year that I've been here. So I appreciate y'all all reaching out and trying to gain further understanding and, and asking the questions so that we can help direct applicants in, in their path forward and help us as we interpret code items on a daily basis. Community, thank you all for coming out. I, I, our office is located at 7111 Bowie Lake Road, right next to the Fire Department. Feel free to stop in and ask any questions along the way. I know that a lot of time, different questions pop up on social media, and not everything is always accurate information. But you are always welcome to come to our office and ask any question. I will talk to you personally and take time out of my day to, to make sure that you are as informed as, as you can be. Everyone deserves to be as informed as possible. So thank you all for coming out tonight. We don't typically have big crowds, so I appreciate the involvement of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. City manager?
Mr. Darney?
Nothing denied, thank you.
Thank you, sir. City engineering is, we representing?
Thank you, Chairman. Curtis is, is out sick, so I filled in his place tonight. One of the things that has come out of the discussions of your first agenda item is staff, moving forward, is currently there's a certification block or statement that's required on master development plans for pods that generically says unless otherwise specified or listed deviations or exceptions, this development will or intends to meet all applicable regulations that apply to it. One of the things that has been unclear in the past is an applicant may graphically represent something that would technically be a deviation, but they don't list that deviation as being a deviation. And so we, staff is going to tweak that certification on the cover page that basically puts the applicant on notice that says, if you don't specifically list it in words under this certification, the expectation from staff on future approvals of that plan development, whether it's a site plan or, or construction subdivision plans, is that you will meet all applicable requirements and regulations, regardless of how it's shown graphically or represented graphically on the plan. So we feel like that will put some more responsibility on the applicant's design team to understand what some of those future regulations might, how some of those future regulations, the current regulations, but they are imposed on a future submittal, how that might impact their layout of their master development plan. And therefore, go ahead and have them incorporate that impact in the master development plan so we don't have a lot of amendments that come back before you and the Board of Commissioners to master plans. We feel like that will allow you to understand exactly what they are requesting that deviates from the underlying base zone. And if they don't list it, then they are on notice and understand that staff's expectations and your expectations when you see a site plan or preliminary plat is that it will meet everything that applies to them unless it was specifically written out in a narrative on that cover sheet. So we hope that will provide for some clarity in the future, both on the town, the city side and as well as the applicant's side. But that's, that's something that we're looking to implement immediately, and hopefully you will see that with whatever your next pod submittal is.
Thank you, sir. I imagine that's highly appreciated now with all the developments and submission that the staff's having to process. Thank you for that. City attorney, Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Really, the last item on the agenda is Planning Commission Roundtable comments. I'm going to first start with Mr. King. Do you have anything this evening?
No, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Yes, I appreciate the com, the community coming out to express their concerns and that. Please be mindful that we'll always keep your concerns in mind.
Thank you. Ms. Schilling?
I also want to thank everybody who came out. I am lis, I'm listening to you too. I want to be a part of this community for a while. And also, thank you to you guys for making the clarifications and giving us the best recommendations for what's best for the city and what's, what we're supposed to be doing.
Thank you, Ms. Schilling. Mayor Anderson?
Same thing. I just appreciate everybody coming out so that we can all work through these issues together and have the best community possible. Thank you to the staff. I know that sometimes it can be a lot, and I appreciate all of you and Ethan for always being willing. You're always willing to stop what you're doing and help people and help us get things resolved. I appreciate that all the time, so, and thank you to the board.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. McDonald?
Just echo what everybody said, thanks for coming out. I would like to say, though, just encourage everybody, stay involved. It doesn't have to just be in your backyard to show up and keep pressure on us. I think we have better discussion. Everybody's a little bit more inclined to explain themselves and talk a little bit deeper about where their position is when we have a full house. So I think the meetings are more productive, so it was great to see everybody. And thanks to my fellow Planning Commissioners for just good discussion all around.
Mr. McDonald, Mr. Colley?
Yeah, just want to thank the staff, they always do a good job and a lot of hard work. And for the citizens, thanks for coming out. And make sure you go to the Board of Commissioners meeting because that's where it really counts. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Calley. Ms. Shulis?
Thanks, everyone, for coming out. It's great to see people get off Facebook and actually come here. So I really appreciate everybody showing up. Mr. Greer, do we have any work sessions through the end of the year planned?
Currently, we do not have anything on our schedule. I'm working on getting a training set up as a work session that will occur in the next couple of months out with our consultant planner to come in and do some training, and then also with Mr. Carter and his team to come in and do some training as well for Robert's Rules of Order and how meetings are ran. Since we have a few new members and a few new faces over the last year, I think it would probably be in the best interest to make sure we're all focused on exactly the task at hand and what items we're supposed to be evaluating each, depending on the item that's up for consideration.
That's all for me.
Thank you. I just really echo all the same sentiments of appreciation. Thank you all so much. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
We motion adjourn.
Motion.